We all set to go?
Yep.
Who I'm seeing here, we have Brittany, we have Ann, we have Brenda, we have Mike next to me and then myself. We've got Rudy, Brian, and Derek, and Jerry, us here. And also President's Bill and Lou from the press. So Lawrence Seboz is watching. Tending, okay. I want to start the work session off, it's Teacher Appreciation Week, I don't know if you've gotten anything from MRA or anything like that. Take a minute to recognize our teachers, I think it'd be a good gesture if we give them a week off. I don't know what you guys think. But regardless, I got a tough, tough job going on right now. Appreciate what you're doing. And we can't forget about our building principals either, so. And we can move on here a little bit. One thing about graduation, Brian, do we know yet if it's going to be this week, can you give us a little bit of direction?
Yeah, with graduation right now, we're waiting for the governor to come out with guidelines of what graduation can look like, what we can do and what we can't do. So he said last, I think it was Friday or Thursday, can't remember, the conference that he had that he shared with, that he'd be coming out with graduation guidelines this week. So we're going to be patiently waiting here to hear this week, and then we'll put a plan together to honor our seniors.
And then I think we're still shooting for the correct graduation date, right, Brian?
We are shooting for May 22nd, correct, yep.
Right. Thank you.
Yep.
And the next item up will be the interview process for superintendent interviews. And I know all of us have gotten applications to review the last couple of weeks. And just as a summary, we accepted applications from April 17th through May 1st, so Friday would have been the cutoff. We received 23 candidates who applied for the superintendent vacancy. And tonight we'll be looking at selecting four to up to six applicants to be selected for an interview. And the way we had discussed earlier for setting dates is semifinalist interviews will be May 11th. So that'll be next Monday. And finalist interviews will be conducted on the following Wednesday, the 13th, or the Wednesday immediately following that Monday. So I guess the question we need to kind of pose here is, does the board want to deliberate and make a decision on May 13th after the final round of interviews, or do we prefer to hold a special meeting the next morning at, like, let's say 7:30 AM? Or sometime in the morning?
And John, I can add a little. Sure. I'd like to add a little bit in there, Brian told me, Mr. Corp told me that there is a scholarship night on May 13th. So we're looking at possibly moving the interviews up an hour or so, but I'll finalize that with Mr. Corp. I believe the interviews would be closer to 2 o'clock for the first semi, first finalist, 3:30 for the second finalist, and then we'd need some time to deliberate. Or do you want to, basically the question is, and I'm proposing the question, do you want to sleep on it? And, and then come back early in the morning and make a final decision? Or would you like to finalize it? The reason I have to, I know, need to know is because we need to post these meetings. These are special meetings that have to be posted to the public, so just, it's one of those points of protocol, if you will, that we need to follow.
I would like to sleep on them.
What was that, Brittany?
I would like to sleep on it that night and meet again the next morning, sorry.
Okay.
I think I agree. Especially if we have scholarship night or something, I don't want to be pressed for time. And run out of time that Wednesday night, I'd rather sleep on it and come back the next morning. Where we can make a solid decision without being rushed.
At 7:30, we can still be in our pajamas too, so.
And that was just a proposed time. We could meet anytime you want, I was just saying, basically the next day. What you name the time as a board and you, that's fine with me.
Ann, your thoughts?
I'm fine either way.
I'm fine. It doesn't matter to me.
Okay. Brenda?
Yeah, I'm good either way, next morning, a little better, I think.
You want to do 7:30 or 8 o'clock or later? I'm usually, I'm working out by 5:30.
7:30 is for me.
Yeah, I'm up by 6, so.
I mean, I can go earlier too, but.
7:30 or, that's fine, to work, Mike. No, I'll just have cold, more of my chores. All right, any more discussion on that? We'll shoot for 7:30.
It sounds good.
And then Jerry, you had some info you wanted to?
Yes, I was, I know as board members and administrators, we've talked about this before, but this is basically for the audience, others not in the know, this is, you know, a pretty formal process here, it's a confidential process. That's why all the candidates tonight will be discussed by a letter as the candidates sent in their application, first come, first served, so the first candidate was A, second one was B, and so on. So tonight, as, as we talk about candidates asking the board to refrain from using names and district names, so really, even gender, so really the superintendent, superintendent's district is doing this, if you have to comment, or the candidate has this strength, you know, this area to work on, that type of thing. So just reminding that, and I'll just follow in, so all the, all the school board members received the candidates, the 23 candidates, and they were able to rate the candidates on leadership, vision, instructional leadership, communication skills, character, school finance, facility and facilities, community focus. And then there's also an overall impression of the candidate through the paperwork. And then a question of yes, no, or maybe to whether the candidate should be interviewed or not. So I think that brings us to the candidate discussion, and John, I'll, I'll go back to you.
So when we go over this, what, got some characteristics and experiences we're looking at on candidates? Are we looking for more of the superintendent experience, those experienced superintendents? That was kind of how I leaned, I guess, when I looked at them. I don't know how, how the rest felt, but. Brittany, you look like you want to say something?
Don't always look like that, do I? Um. I don't know if I really had one thing I was looking for, I just, I was all over the board, some I just wanted to hear more about, if they had experience, I guess, I don't know if, well, depending on the rating, yeah, there was higher ratings, but I don't know what I'm supposed to say, so.
Okay.
Next?
I kind of looked at it as, I guess I took a closer look at those with experience rather than without, and the ones who had had experience but weren't in the superintendent position currently, made me wonder why. So I guess I almost discarded a few of those. So yeah, I guess I was looking for someone with some experience personally.
I guess my view was experience was pretty important since we scaled back our administration. And I think obviously there's going to be some training involved of the person in a new position. Just might make a transition a little bit easier with somebody with a little superintendent background.
I agree with that, as a district, right now I think experience would be a good, a good fit.
I think as, you know, as, as a person helping the district through the process here, I just think as a district you have more going on than a lot of other districts because not only are you going through the COVID-19 scenario, obviously the death of your superintendent, beloved superintendent to replace that, just looking for a guiding hand, a superintendent that has some experience, I think was, is probably a wise choice. But also I think it's important that we can keep Mr. Corp, Mr. Nelson, and Mr. Martinez in the positions that they're in. So you're, so you're having a less transition with the number of positions. So I think it's a wise move to put in, to move in a superintendent and allow the other people to stay in their positions if at all possible. That would be, that would be what I've heard from conversations with administrators and school board members.
So unless they just to, when we looked at the candidates, how many do we want to interview for semifinalists? We suggested between four to six.
Hey, John, can you, I pressed the raise hand icon, does anybody see that?
Oh, I do now, it's just a small little blue eye, yeah, okay.
Oh, I just wanted to add, add to the characteristics and experiences. I agree with what everybody said up to this point with regard to the value of experience in light of our district's situation. With regard to characteristics, me cover letters and letters of recommendations really shed a nice light with regard to a person's or candidate's characteristics in terms of that candidate's involvement with, you know, the community, whether it be the school community, the business community, the entire district as a whole. And I think in addition to the experience that I'm interested in pursuing, it's, it's looking at those candidates and that we can tell by and through their cover letters, and then also a letter of recommendations that demonstrate a nice cross-section of kind of a diverse background in terms of being able to reach out to all parts of the community and not just the school system.
Thanks.
John, a point of clarification here, you know, I probably have the questions or the agenda a little bit out of order, we, we just might want to jump into reviewing the candidates. And that will determine the number of candidates you want to interview, so. So, you know, I think the, the question is, it probably is the board is thinking four or six would be the best number, an even number I should say is the best, because what we'll have is we have the school board administrative group interviewing on May 11th, and then in the opposite candidate, so say for example, candidate A will be interviewing with the board, and then candidate B will be with the school staff community group, and then you'll flip candidates. So even number would be best, but it's, it's not a major problem if it's an odd number either, so. But just, you, you might just want to jump into reviewing the, the candidates is my suggestion.
And we, we can do that by, we have the rating sheet, I don't know if you have the documents in front of you, and it's just labeled by number, or excuse me, by letter. And we have letter L, letter F, letter P, letter H. Those appear to be towards the top.
I'd like to entertain letter E.
Okay. Brittany said that.
I would agree, that was an interesting one to me.
Yep. And the more I think about it, I think that would be one to consider too. And if we made it an odd number, I'd like to suggest the letter D.
I agree with both those add-ons if we go that route. They're on my list.
Okay, Greg, your hand is up.
Would you be willing to repeat what you had identified, John?
Yes. Letter M, letter F, letter P.
Letter what?
P as in Paul.
Okay.
And H. And then we're talking about adding the letter D as in David. And E as in Edward.
Okay. The approach I'd like to take, I'll, I'll just offer the, I, I would, my position is to limit it to four, four candidates. Based solely on my review and examination of the the applications. And I, I don't know if we're keeping a tab, tabulation with regard to the, the candidate and corresponding letters, but mine are M as in Mark, F as in Frank, P as in Paul, and E as in Edward. And with that said, I'm certainly open to more than four. I just wanted to offer my opinion.
Okay.
For the other board members.
And Jerry, you said we can do five then, right?
You, you certainly can, absolutely, we'll just have one, one group will have a little bit of a break at one point, and that, and that's fine as well. Yes, we can make any number work, four to six, you know, I've heard of other districts go more, but I, I don't think I'm hearing that with, with the group, so, yep, anything, four, five, six, whatever you're comfortable with. You, you might, you know, there might be a few others that want to comment yet, I don't know if we've heard from everybody, but you might want to, you know, circle back a little bit, John, and just sort of, you know, just make sure, you know, head nods or thumbs up or something on, on each candidate as you go down, and then you'll kind of know where you're at, I think.
Okay. Should I do like a roll call then? For the ones I suggested?
I, I think you're being a little more, less formal, I, I think it's your special meeting that comes after this one will be your formal vote, I, I just think you're looking for indications that they would like to interview that person, yep, more informal.
Okay. So I guess you can just raise your hand or whatever, when I call a number, and then I'll look at the screen, so. M, letter M?
You want a virtual hand or?
Yeah, that works.
Or a general hand.
Um, yep, got you, Greg. Next, next one is F as in Frank. Okay, see everybody's hands? Oops, I'm sorry. I'll raise my hands, I raised my hand for him. He is in Paul. See everybody's hands, okay? And then H is in Henry. Danger, danger. Okay. And then D is in David. Got four. And then we have E as in Edward. Looks like we've got everybody, okay. So that would be six, we have four with everybody's hands being raised. And then two with only four. So would we rather do four or six? Greg would rather do four. Let's see, changes my.
I was, originally I was comfortable with up to six, I just, my personal opinion based on my sole review was four. But in light of the majority being in favor of six candidates, that would be my recommendation is to interview all six.
Okay. Mike, six, Brenda? Ann? Head nod or wave? Brittany? Okay. I think we're going to go for six. Were there any other numbers or letters that we feel we need to look at before we move on? Okay.
I, I would just share, not only with the board and Emmett, but the people listening, this has been a, a, it's, it's been a short but an intense process, I think we're, we're having a fairly short meeting right now, but, but there's been a lot of homework done, there's been a lot of discussion, analyzing, so, so I commend you on your, on your work, I think you have a, a good slate of candidates. 23 is, is a really good number, it speaks highly of the Pelican Rapids School District to have 23 applications. I, I think, you know, the, the six, you're, you're spending the day, you, you need to, I, I agree with that number and agree with your candidates, just in the sense that you want to, you know, make sure no stones are unturned here, you want to hear from everybody. Even though it's on a Zoom, it's a little bit different, but you're, you're going to hear from everybody, and, and that's the way you'll make the best decision, I believe, for the, for the school district. And, and I just have a, wondering if anybody has any questions about the process here? I'm going to keep talking a little bit here, so after there's a, you know, when we follow the work session, when the work session ends, we're immediately going into a special meeting to make a formal, you know, extend the offer, so we'll go into the, the board agenda that Barb sent out today, and, and what that'll entail then is it, it gives permission to move forward. So either tonight or tomorrow morning, I will be scheduling all of the candidates, I'll, I'll probably tomorrow morning. Do you get ahold of all the candidates, and then I'll send out the schedule, update the interview questions, all that processing. So really, we're, we're set to go with with all the process for Monday, and I think that's the big day, obviously, is, so on Monday, what you'll do is you'll have all the candidates, the six candidates will be interviewed by the two groups. You will meet with the school superintendent, or the school staff group, so you can hear input on the candidates from them, you'll hear from the administration, and then the board, after you've gathered all of that information, then the board will have a special meeting again, and, and it'll be, well, the whole day will be a special meeting with the interviews, and, and you will make a motion then to extend finalist interviews. And then how, how many you decide, whether it's one, two, whatever you decide, three, then we will schedule those for Wednesday, and then we made the decision that we'll hear the interviews, and we will then take a break and reconvene in the morning for a special meeting again, and consider the, making an offer to a candidate, basically you're go, you're entering into negotiations with the candidate. So questions on the, on the process here, from here out, it's a little intense, but yeah, it's a good, good thing for the district, good for the, thing for the board to, to move forward and, and do the best we can finding a replacement.
Okay, Ann has a question.
The interview questions, did we finalize that list?
The board members that, that talked to me, I made changes, so maybe what I'll do is I'll send those out again so you can review, but I think if all the suggestions, I think there was two or three board members that had additions and possible changes, we made those. And so certainly open, we've got a little bit of time to be able to review them one more time. So I'll, I'll send out both the, the semifinalist questions and the finalist questions tonight or tomorrow morning, and you, I'll do it in a PDF, and, and then that way you can for sure get those and review them and get back to me as soon as you can. Yep, that would be fine.
And once we're finalized on the questions, I don't know, John or someone, can you assign those to us so we know ahead of time? Which ones will each be asking?
I will do that, I'd like to get the questions done either by Wednesday or Thursday. I'll get that assigned to you, and I guess my question to you as a board are, do you want us to mail you the copies? Or you okay printing? I guess, I think you just let me know or Barb know if you want them printed, otherwise if you all have a printer. Because what I'd really like for your day, I'd like you to have that one sheet of paper and another blank, or another notebook. So try to do as less, least amount of technology as possible. So really you've got your questions in front of you, you're jotting notes so you can concentrate on the candidate, and, and then, so you're not worried about technology, and like right now, I actually, I have my iPad, I have my Mac computer, and I got my phone going right now. That's not a good look, because I'm looking all over the place, I think you really want to be concentrating on the candidate and reading them as best you can. So I think the simplest thing to do is a, a sheet of paper with the questions, and you'll have, you'll have it marked, the ones that you're asking, and then you'll also have marked, you'll, you'll rate the candidates as you go, like we rated all the candidates, one through five, you will do the same thing on all the questions, but then you'll need a side sheet of paper to take any notes that you might want to do on each candidate. The other thing is, I, I resent today that long document on protocols and how to make decisions, that's something, it's homework, you, you really, really need to do, it'll, it'll be, it'll really benefit you reading that document and understanding all about the process. Again, it's a reminder on the do's and the don'ts, what you can ask, what you can't ask, and that's why you have those questions, you really, you really can't stray far from those questions, you can, you can ask to explain further, or, you know, go offshoots a little bit, but for the most part, we want to stick to the questions, you know? I'll stop now.
So I think, anything else we should be covering before we move on to the regular meeting? Or should we wait till about seven with the, to start that?
You know, I think I did say approximately seven, so I, so I think you're okay whichever, if people wanna break or if they want to just jump right into that motion. I think, are there other clarifying situations regarding the interviews or, you know, different things? Cause I think the admin team and I, we, we will be certainly looking at how do we connect and find out more about these candidates. So I would either you as board members make connections that you know of personally, or send those to the admin or other people. If you, if you don't have time or comfortable calling. So I think what we need to do is just dig in and everything from Googling people and looking at LinkedIn and looking at you name it, just kinda, again, no stones unturned, find out about as much as we can about the candidates prior to, to Monday. And then when we get down to the finalists, there's even more work to do on really finalizing what's, what's happening with those candidates, because those are the ones that you're honing in on to possibly make an offer to. So again, you wanna know as much as you possibly can. So we, so we need to, you know, decipher what's, what's real, what's important to the board. And, and again, just trying to do the best you can. The best information you have will give you the best solution for your superintendent.
And Jerry, you'll be, once we go through the, the special meeting and adjourn, you'll be contacting those applicants to arrange for times. Is that how it works or see if?
Yeah. That is, that is correct. Yep. I will, what I'll first do is finalize, you know, the, the list. I got some work to do, prep work to do. And, and then I'll, then I will be contacting each of the candidates to determine a time. So I wanna get this format set up. So I'd like to do, you know, you said candidate M and F, for example, I wanna pair these together. So then we're just flipping. So we, we make best use of their time too. So, so they're not interviewing at eight thirty and then interviewing again in the afternoon. So it'd be eight thirty and nine thirty and vice versa, you know, all of that, just to try to block people's time. So I'll do a little organization there and we'll be pretty well set to go though.
Okay.
Ann has a question.
Ann? Go ahead and mute.
Wasn't working right for me there. I got it finally. Do we have a letter drafted for all of the other candidates that we won't be interviewing so we can get that sent out to them?
Actually, the proper protocol is you don't notify anybody until after the process is done. And so when we have a signed contract or make an offer to a superintendent, that's, that's when they'll get formally notified by us. But we've been pretty clear that we're meeting tonight and selecting the candidates and we're interviewing on May eleventh and the thirteenth. That was in all the notices that we sent out. So informally, they'll, they'll know that if they don't get a call by tomorrow, that they're not one of the semifinalists.
Okay, thank you.
That makes sense. Well, should we, Greg, your hand is still raised. Do you have it or is it just still on the screen?
Sorry about that.
Okay. Let's say we move into our special meeting. Unless we have any other questions we wanna discuss. Okay. Well, let's call the meeting to order. It is six fifty-seven. We have everybody here. We're gonna start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic, to its citizens, my nation, our God, indivisible, everlasting, justice for all. Everybody? You guys already received the meeting agenda? Copy of it?
Yes. Yep.
So the first item up will be approve the meeting agenda. So entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the.
Motion by Mike. Do we have a second? Second by Brittany? And we have to do this by roll call, but is there any discussion on the agenda or anything we need to add or subtract? Doesn't appear so. And all those in favor will signify by saying aye, but I'll do a roll call here. So Brittany?
Aye.
Ann?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Mike? And then I. I suppose same, but motion carries. Opportunity for visitors to address the board. Lou? Nope, we're good. Bill? Okay. We'll move on. Item V, business items. So we have A, stem finalist interviews for the office of superintendent and scheduled meetings as listed below.
Are we changing the date of the Wednesday to two o'clock? Is that what we talked about? Because of the schedule? Who's Jerry now?
Yes. Does that work with everybody? Is two o'clock okay? So I would note that change in the agenda then of two, two and three thirty rather than three and four thirty. So we're just moving up an hour. And the to be determined on, on May eleventh, we will gather at eight o'clock for pre, pre-meeting routines and tech checks and all of that. And the first interview is at eight thirty. That'll be a full day.
Okay. And then when do we make a motion to extend the applicants we selected? Do we?
I think you need to, I think you need to, right after the right above the dates or right above special board meeting, we should fill in the letters. So, okay, so someone needs to meet, make this motion including all of the letters.
I'll do that for the first meeting. Okay. So I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion for a special school board meeting, interviews of superintendent semifinalists, Monday, May eleventh, two thousand twenty. And we'll start at zero eight hundred AM. The first interview will be eight thirty for the following, actually the place will be Zoom and district office. I think most of us will be on Zoom and maybe here at the office. But anyways, so a motion and we're extending that to candidate M. Candidate F. Candidate P isn't Paul. Candidate E isn't Edward. Candidate H isn't Henry. Candidate D isn't David. So I made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion on the special school board meeting and those candidates and the time and date?
The last, the last has a corresponding letter of D as in dog.
Correct. Yep, D as in David. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye and I'll do it by roll call. Mike? Brittany?
Aye.
Ann?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Next item will be a special school board meeting. And I can make that motion again also. Special school board meeting, interview of superintendent finalists. Wednesday, May thirteenth, two thousand twenty at two PM. And again, it'll be via Zoom and the district office.
You know, actually, John, I, I think that motion with all the letters and the dates was, was all inclusive, just the item A. So I think, I think you've already done that.
Okay.
So, so the, the motion, it included all of the candidates, the six candidates, and it included your May eleventh meeting, your May thirteenth meeting with a correction to two o'clock and then your, your May fourteenth meeting. So I think all of that was in, in your motion with doing A.
Okay. And just so we know, we're, we're set for May fourteenth, be the following day at seven thirty. To extend an offer for the position of superintendent of schools.
I understand that motion did not reference these. I mean, are you talking that it's implied, Jerry, or? Or I'm a little confused with regard to your, your position on that.
Well, if you look at business items, there's one letter, there's one item. And it includes the finalists. And then it has all of the meetings related to that. If you're more comfortable making a motion for all the meetings, I'm fine with that. But I think the, you really have one item on the agenda that you approved, the six finalists and the dates of interviews.
My question would center, I guess I would, I would encourage the board to consider three separate motions for each meeting in light of the change from two thirty to two PM. For the special school board meeting dated May thirteen, because I don't, because we didn't, we approved the meeting agenda, we, we discussed the modification of that time change, but in light of the, the application process, from my perspective, I'd be much more comfortable if, if the board approached all three meetings independent of each other by motion. That's my opinion.
I'm fine with that.
And I'm, I'm offering my opinion as a board member. Fellow board members. If everybody else is comfortable with it, that's fine. My only concerns is the, is the change to the time that wasn't reflected specifically in John's motion.
Yeah, I have no problem just doing each individual. So.
Point of clarification here is someone taking notes on who made the motions.
I've been writing them down. Barb here.
Barb is not here, so.
She's here.
She is here. Oh, perfect. I didn't know that.
So I was keeping those too, so.
All right, perfect. Then we're good to go.
So I'll, I'll run them down here. So I'll make a motion, special school board meeting interview of superintendent finalists, Wednesday, May thirteenth, two thousand twenty at two PM. And they'll be Zoom via district office. And do we have a second? Second by Ann?
Yep.
And any discussion on that one? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye and I'll do it by roll call. Greg?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Ann?
Aye.
Brittany?
Aye.
Mike? And I. Motion carries. And the next one, I'll make a motion for a special school board meeting, extending an offer to the position of superintendent of schools. Thursday, May fourteenth, two thousand twenty at zero seven thirty AM. And then again, it'll be Zoom or district office. So I made a motion. I'll entertain a second. Second by Brenda. Any discussion on the meeting on May fourteenth? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye and I'll do a roll call. Mike? And I'm aye. Greg?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Ann?
Aye.
Brittany?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Next item off will be upcoming meetings. We have a regular school board meeting and that is Monday, May eighteenth, two thousand twenty at six PM. And that'll be Zoom and district office.
John, I'd just like to add one thing. You know, if you're finishing up your offer seven thirty on Thursday morning or say it's eight thirty or nine, you know, by the time you contact the candidate and, and have a time for, I believe it will be Rudy and John, that'll probably be negotiating with the candidate. That you may get it done by Monday, the eighteenth, but don't be surprised if you have to have a special meeting one day later in the week at seven thirty to approve a contract. Just giving you that heads up. It'll be a, you know, like a seven thirty, one agenda item, just get together, approve the contract, that type of thing. Cause that's a pretty quick turnaround to negotiate a contract from, from just say noon on, on Thursday to Monday at six o'clock. That just depending on whether you come to agreement or not, I guess. So it, it can be done, but just be aware.
Anything else we need to cover, Jerry, before we conclude here?
Go ahead. Ann has something.
Yep.
Do we need to come together as a negotiating committee or how are we doing this contract?
I will leave that up to John and, or whoever's on the negotiating committee. Early on in the process, you know, we talked about John and Rudy negotiating based off of the offer that was made, that was going to be approved to Dr. Richardson. And I think that's probably your starting point, but nothing wrong with the negotiations team getting together.
Yeah. With.
Guidelines in the brochure say one hundred and twenty-five thousand to one hundred and thirty-five thousand is the range for the, for the, for a candidate.
Ann, would you like to be part of it too?
It doesn't really matter to me. I just wanted to kind of know what the process was to know if I need to be present for any further meetings during that week.
Or Brenda? You're kinda, you're muted.
Yeah. It don't matter. I, I can, would this be a time that I ask or give you my opinion on a contract or? I don't, I don't know.
Or do we wait? What I could do is if, you know, we could figure it out too, but Rudy and I are kind of the main two points, we could confer and discuss with you. Also, or keep you apprised or you had input? Or when it gets closer, maybe we can decide in one of the other meetings too if you need to be a part of it. So.
Yeah, if you guys have something in the works, you know, that's, that's fine with me too.
It's funneled between, you know, one or two people and we can, we already set the guidelines at the last meeting. As far as.
As far as, yeah.
Yep.
So we gotta have a basis to go on.
Right. We can cross that when we get there, I guess. Anything else?
You know, I'll just keep going on that one. Next week is, is a rather full week, all day Monday, half a day Wednesday and then going so, so if you were getting together, I don't think it'll take long. It might be a chance, maybe you should, Rudy should set up a Zoom meeting with the negotiations committee sooner than later to really sort of get that one out of the way. So then you can concentrate on the candidates. That would be my recommendation. So get a preliminary offer ready to go. It would be my suggestion.
Well, anything else? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Bye Greg. We have a second to adjourn. Second by Brittany? Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor just signify by saying aye and I'll do it by roll call. And I'm gonna go aye. Mike? Greg?
Aye.
Aye. Brenda?
Aye.
Ann?
Aye.
And Brittany?
Aye.
Aye.
German carries. Thanks, everybody.